By all means, just uh, just flag me down. Um, with that, I will call this meeting, call the April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty special committee, the whole meeting to order at six thirty one P M. And like always said, we are meeting on the shared traditional lands of the K- Dalish people. We are gonna do a roll call. Um, and Counselor Baxter.
You're here.
Counselor Day.
I'm here.
Counselor Jansen.
Present.
Counselor Kobiyashi. Uh, Counselor Parkinson.
I'm here.
And Mayor Martin.
Here.
Thank you very much. Looking for a recommendation to adopt the agenda as presented. Just raise your hand. Moved by Counselor Kobiyashi. Uh, any discussion? Not seeing any, uh, those opposed to the motion. Seeing no opposed. The uh, agenda is approved. Uh, there is no uh, public that no speakers have registered to speak. And we will go on to item four, uh, new business, four point one tax rate review twenty twenty. And now I'd like to invite Alan Thomas, our uh, Chief Financial Officer, to introduce the item. Alan.
Thanks Chair. We're just uh, making sure we get rid of some feedback here. Okay. Sorry, Mr. Chair, we're just making sure we get rid of feedback here, trying to get this turned up. Okay, I am going to um, Amanda, share the screen for the presentation. Do I do that, Amanda, or you do?
No, you would do that on your end there. Thank you.
How does that look?
Looks great.
All right. Excellent, okay. Sorry, everyone, give me two seconds there. There we go. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. We're um, presenting the tax rate review from uh, tax rate review twenty twenty. Just so we're all on the same page here. Uh, again, the reason we are here is um, council direction last year indicated that the ratio of taxes for the business class be discussed at the beginning of the twenty twenty budget process. And although we're not at the beginning, we are in the budget process at this point. So um, what I have done is I have taken that direction. And today we will look at the tax rate policy, and the process will be as follows. Uh, an oversight of tax policy principles will then review the business tax classes, including an assessment of the tax ratio and the tax burden. Review light industrial and recreation NPO classes. Have a quick overview uh, of the residential class. But again, that's more for reference and comparative purposes. It's not a uh, deliverable from uh, from council's request. And then we'll look at options for addressing potential uh, inequalities in the business tax and the light industrial. So we're gonna start with the um, tax policy principles, principles per the chart outlined in in the draft document I provided. I won't go over them all, but just want to talk about a few uh, key principles here. Namely, um, looking at how we can set tax rates. Uh, a couple of critical ones are the horizontal equity and the vertical equity. In the horizontal equity, it's it's a, it's a situation where taxpayers in similar positions, i.e. the same type of properties, are all treated equal, as opposed to the vertical equity concept, where tax is based on ability to pay. In other words, you charge more to those can afford it. And another key one, I think, um, pointing out here is the benefit equity, where the tax burden is distributed relative to benefits received. In other words, basically uh, user pay. So those are the sort of top level principles. In our case, I think we need to look at external considerations as well, as that may be the key to Callwood, if we do want to address our uh, our regional differences. So as a city, where do we sit in terms of assessed values? As you can see here, the residential um, assessed values have increased in terms of both, obviously, overall value and as well as a percentage of total businesses, total taxes for the city. It doesn't necessarily mean the uh, burden has shifted to the residential uh, taxpayer, because we also have to look at the mix of the amount of residential properties that have been added during that time period versus the proportion to the businesses that have been added. Um, and what we'll see there is residential assessed values are up about one point five billion versus business, which was higher in twenty ten due to my understanding is the the gravel pit valuation back then versus, or until of the, until it depreciated, um, or until the value, the assessed value went down. And subsequently, we're basically down over the ten years or up slightly since twenty eleven. One of the things I want to point out here is if you look at the total of the residential versus the business, it's about ninety nine point seven percent of our total tax rate. So what that means is that if we do any adjustments in the rec nonprofit, light industrial utilities, it won't have a material impact on the other ones. And secondly, if we do any adjustments in the business class, it'll pretty much have to fall one hundred percent to the residential class, because the other ones uh, are simply too small in amount to absorb any of that burden. So let's move into the um, business tax class ratio. So this is basically the amount of our business tax uh, rate divided by the residential tax rate. And per um, our city's economic development strategy, and I'm gonna quote the above, "The city has had a competitive disadvantages disadvantage when it comes to property tax rates for light industrial and business categories. And this has had the effect of deterring or stalling needed investments." Again, that was why we were charged this year with bringing back a um, a tax policy to committee uh, and ultimately council. You can see in the last ten years, um, the tax ratio has increased from about three point six seven in twenty ten to four point five one in twenty nineteen. That means we're about one of the highest in the uh, in the C R D. And um, competitiveness, uh, as has been described earlier, can become an issue based on these rates. Now, and that's the business class tax ratio. The other thing I want to look at is the tax burden. This is basically the percent of tax paid by businesses over the entire uh, property tax total. Again, uh, this has gone down per table four A in the document. Uh, we were about thirty percent in twenty ten. It has gone down to twenty point nine percent in two thousand and nineteen. I want to show this ratio, um, not, it doesn't show that business class taxes are decreasing. What it shows, again, based on the assessed values, is it's mostly due to the impact of all the new residential dwellings over the last decade, because the total assessed value of the residential uh, properties is up about one and a half billion. And that's significantly more than the increase in the business, which, as alluded to earlier, has actually gone down. So again, um, just want to remind you that um, any reduction in the business tax rates are gonna have an equal and opposite impact on the residential tax rates. Shall we continue? No questions?
Counselor Day, did you uh, want to ask your question now?
Um, my question is uh, about the first table that you brought up comparing uh, different municipalities and their tax rates. And I'm wondering if um, you've taken into account the fact that we all offer a different service, right? The um, the cost of uh, services is different in each region, depending on what services are offered in Sanich. Uh, your garbage and recycling is included. In Callwood, uh, you pay for that separately. Uh, and there's also a lot of disparity in the cost for police services, for example. Callwood being one of the more affordable um, areas in the C R D. Uh, so how have you factored that into your uh, conclusions here?
At this point, um, not factored in, in the sense of, we're just looking at metrics as laid out in the property tax um, values. So we need to look at the, at the tax philosophy based on the principles. And then I can say, okay, where can I go with business class? I haven't equalized these for the differences. I've looked at different metrics to say, what is our tax ratio? What is our tax burden? What is the trend over the last ten years? So these are just different measures to look at it and are not normalized per se for any differences that you may have just described there. It's just a comparative amongst the C R D, and that's why we've chosen to show a couple of comparatives, so we can sort of cross-reference and not just have one specific ratio. But again, not normalized for those differences, as you've indicated.
And you also mentioned about uh, tax equity. I sort of uh, lost my place there, but you were specifically referring to ability to pay uh, being taken into account. And as far as I can recall, I've never seen anything available to municipalities that takes that into account, ability to pay.
Well, these are just principles that can be followed. It's again, when, when we were tasked with bringing back a tax policy to committee slash council, we wanted to start that discussion with principles that, that we can follow. As we said, vertical equity, horizontal equity. Some of them are 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 contrary in nature. In other words, if you do A, you can't do B. So really, what this was is providing an overview to committee on how we could approach our tax policy principles. From an academic perspective, again, knowing full well that you can't obviously satisfy all of these criteria, and certain criteria are are more applicable to, to some areas rather than, than others. So again, it's just an overview of the policy principles versus a versus a uh, direction on which one we should follow.
Uh, Robert, I see your uh, hand up.
Thank you, Chair Logan. The, the concept of a uh, ability to pay or vertical equity in the municipal sense is just that a property that is worth ten million dollars will pay more in property taxes than that, than a property that is worth one million dollars. And so uh, arguably, a property that has greater value commercially has greater capacity to pay. And the same notion applies in the municipal context to residential property. And so that's how vertical equity um, is applied in the municipal context by uh, applying our tax rate by the assessed value. Therefore, those properties, both commercially and residentially, with greater assessed values, uh, pay greater amounts of property tax.
Thank you for that. Michael.
Yeah, I have a question um, as to whether um, you can tell us which properties in Callwood fall under recreational or nonprofit?
Yeah, we'll have to bring it back. I, I, I'm just talking with Jen here. Well, the specific list of properties I don't have. I would have to pull that up.
But presumably, we'd be talking about properties like Queen Alexandra, which is a, I believe, a completely nonprofit operation.
Correct.
And do, do you know whether Roll Callwood falls into that category?
Um, just looking at assessed values here, I don't know. Counselor Baxter, I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you. And um, just uh, picking up on your comment that any reduction in uh, business tax would be exactly mirrored, you know, give or take a very small amount in residential tax. Uh, you were talking about the total amount of tax would be mirrored. But as to the individual property, a, a general one percent, sorry, general, uh, yeah, one percent reduction in business tax would actually only be a point two percent increase for the average uh, residential property.
Oh, yeah, yes, sorry, it wasn't, uh, I wasn't referencing a one-to-one relationship. What I was indicating simply was based on the assessed values that um, business and residential are ninety nine point seven percent of the total. So there is not enough capacity in the recreation, light industry and utilities to be able to absorb any change in business. It would basically uh, be one hundred percent uh, applicable in a reallocation to residential, is what I was getting at there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Stuart, I see your hand.
Um, just, just checking here, I don't think the presentation was completed. And if so, I'll back off and wait until we finish the presentation.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So Alan, uh, please continue.
Yes, thanks, uh, Mr. Chair. As I said, I was, I'm not sure how quick I'm speaking over a computer, so I just wanted to check in and see if there were any questions, so.
Fair enough.
Yes, uh, so we've moved on from the business tax, and we're gonna look at the uh, at the light industrial. And again, um, you know, we had said in our economic development strategy, again, that we're at a competitive disadvantage when it comes to the rates for light industry. And um, and it's had the effect of deterring or stalling needed investment. So again, um, light industrial is a small proportion of the tax, less than one tenth of one percent. So any change in these rates won't have a significant material impact on other classes. But if we just look at our, our our, our standing in, in relativity to the uh, to the C R D average, we're about two point seven times greater. Um, and this is, you know, most likely in impacting our investments in these areas and probably uh, needs to be, to be discussed, which we'll do over in the uh, in the options. So um, again, just um, just wanted to be clear of how far we are out from the C R D average and that the uh, the materiality of this uh, of this tax rate. And again, not much to say on the recreation nonprofit here, um, but it's similar to light industrial. We're significantly higher than the C R D average at about two point two times. Um, and therefore, it, we need to need to review that uh, that multiple. Uh, as I alluded to at the intro, um, I just want to give people a quick uh, overview of residential to compare it to the business tax rates and the business tax burden. The B C government puts out the average tax rate for a representative house each year. And uh, and what you, where you can see Callwood from a residential aspect um, and how it compares in the C R D. So I think it's um, it was just more to give uh, committee an idea of, you know, we're saying our business tax rates are higher in the C R D. We're saying our light industrial and recreation are higher. So where do we sit um, from a residential tax burden perspective? And again, that's laid out in section five of the report. Simply for reference. So now, uh, we'll move to the options aspect of it and um, and basically look at the uh, business tax rate first. So again, as laid out in the options on page six of the report, we can really, we have three ways to go on this. We can revise the tax ratio currently to the C R D average if we choose to do that. Right off the top, that would be a five hundred and ninety one thousand dollar movement from the business class tax to mostly residential. We can look at a phased program. Beginning next year, let's say in twenty twenty one, where we can bring our tax rate up to the regional average or within a range of the regional average or a west shore average. Again, open to uh, recommendations from the committee. Per table eight in the document, um, if we moved to the C R D average, it's about a five hundred and ninety one thousand dollar impact as per point one. Uh, Mr. Chair, should I go to the overview of the light industrial uh, options? Or do we want to discuss the business tax options at this point?
Uh, yeah, let's just finish off your uh, your presentation, I think, Alan, then we'll open it up for questions.
Sounds good. Similar approach for options in the light industrial and recreation NPO tax classes. Um, if we choose to move immediately to the C R D average, it would be about seventy six thousand um, equivalent transfer to business slash residential tax classes. And for the recreation NPO, it'd be about fifty thousand. Again, we can take a similar approach with a five-year or lesser time phased in to get to these targets. But from a material addality perspective, um, that's why in, in the recommendation uh, one A, um, given it's a hundred and twenty six thousand uh, K in a shift now in the materiality of it to consider moving to that rate now would be what we've sort of rec, what we've um, highlighted as an option in one A of the report. Again, obviously, option three for both of them are to keep current rates as, as. So that's really it, Mr. Chair.
Uh, that's great. Thank you, Alan. I will move to uh, Stuart. You've had your hand up.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, first, can I just say uh, what I thought that was an excellent report, Alan? Thank you very much. Uh, a lot of information there, well-presented, so uh, so thanks for that.
Thank you.
A couple of things. You, well, where shall I start here? I guess I'll, I'll tell everybody where I'm leaning to, is I'm leaning to suggesting we go back to the three point six seven business tax ratio that was in place in two thousand and ten. That's virtually the same as the C R D average today, but the C R D average is sort of a moving target every year. If we just said, we want to take five years to get back to where we were in two thousand and ten, uh, I think that would be um, progressive and probably uh, uh, help in our competitiveness. Uh, I don't, I, I see the recommendations suggest starting this in two thousand and twenty one. I, I would like to see it start this year. In the other areas, the uh, light industrial and the rec and nonprofit, I think we have to adjust those. I guess in both cases, with the rec and nonprofit, I'm not sure what's in there. And the light industrial is just so far out of whack, I just wonder why. If anybody's got any historical information, why it was set there, if there's any particular reason or whatever. So again, I'd be happy with both of those to say, yep, need to be addressed. Uh, let's get some more information and perhaps uh, in the next month or two, we could agree in two thousand and twenty one what we want to do with those rates, but maybe we just have to live with them for another year until we get more information. I think that's where I'm coming from. And then the question that I had, I think I understand this, Alan, but perhaps when you talk on about table eight uh, under the options, when you say a five percent reduction, is that five percent of the total business tax ratio? Or is that five percent of the difference between the business tax ratio and the C R D average?
It's just the current tax rate times point nine five, so just a five percent overall reduction in that rate right now, moving towards the C R D average, which is approaching. Uh, I'm sorry, I think the change is about seventeen percent or something, so it's just a step to get us there.
Okay. So uh, so I'll let everybody else uh, have their say, but as I said, I'd be prepared to move that we go to the three point six four number over five years, starting this year. And that we ask for a little more information on the light industry tax rate and the rec NPO tax rate before we finalize what I think are fairly likely decisions on those.
Okay. Uh, thank you. I'll go to Cynthia.
There we go. I'm unmuted. And so I'm just wondering uh, procedurally, if we have considered the option of hosting a town hall? I, I'm just very um, alive to the fact that everybody is deeply um, concerned with COVID nineteen. And we're doing these online meetings that people have never, you know, I'm just not sure if people are, are really engaged at this point in time. And it is quite, um, this is a big swing to be making at a time when nobody's really engaged with us about uh, these options. This is representing, you know, a big uh, change in the way we would do things. So is there an option to do some public engagement on these issues?
Alan?
Um, the, I hadn't thought through the process of that. We can always consider options. Counselor Day, um, I have not put together any consideration of that at this point.
I, I would suggest that if um, committee is interested in making any changes for the twenty twenty tax year, that uh, we probably have to make a decision uh, tonight, so staff can get the bylaws ready. Um, otherwise, any town hall or, or any other mechanism, we would have to focus on next year's plans.
And I think I would want to go through corporate services from a governance perspective.
Well, I'm certainly, um, I, I've just got to say, I'm, I'm very uncomfortable with moving at this uh, speed at this time. Um, I don't have a problem with uh, making a decision to go in a different direction, but I have a problem with making that decision right now. Um, there's, there is a lot uh, on the table that I um, do not feel comfortable with. Our ability to pay um, isn't something that we can affect. Uh, yet that is in our report. We've had no input from the public. As far as I know, no one has uh, registered for any of the three, this being the third meeting that we've done online. Uh, I don't think people are prepared to be engaged at this level at this time. And I don't think that these sorts of big moves should be being done when uh, no one's looking. Uh, Callwood residents do support many businesses, and there's great differences between services and how they're deli- delivered throughout the C R D. So just saying that we need to go to the C R D average doesn't work for me. There's a huge difference in the costs uh, for providing the same services. You know, Esquimalt is probably the closest in size to Callwood. And uh, you know, they, their um, tax requisition is uh, at least twice what ours is for police services. So I think that everybody plans their financial future based on that, you know, there aren't going to be big swings. Uh, and so undertaking this now without really any education for our public or input or opportunities for them to say what matters to them, uh, I don't think is really fair to the residents in terms of um, they're, they're just not uh, prepared for this in any way. So I'm all for supporting businesses locally, uh, but I'd like to support them in a very measured and careful way, because uh, it, it's going to have big impacts on people who are already struggling with everything that's coming at us uh, in, in the very near future.
Thank you, Cynthia. I'll recognize uh, Mr. Earl.
Uh, thank you, Chair Logan. Part of the reason uh, that you see that in the recommendation that you have before you tonight, that if council is desirous uh, to uh, change the, the business class ratio, which is the, which is potentially a material change, is our recommendation was uh, that that begin not this year, but in the following year, two thousand and twenty one. That gives the municipality a year uh, to have those communications. Um, and staff can begin the process of that five-year phase in. That said, as council is aware, uh, tax rates are something that are set annually. And so it would create a, a very deep opportunity for rich and meaningful public engagement. The other two areas of recommendation, the recreational nonprofit rate. The other two areas of recommendation, the recreational nonprofit rate and the light industrial rate are both, as described in the report and the presentation, fundamentally not as substantive. And so the collective impact per dwelling, if both of those changes were made, would be in the neighborhood of fifteen dollars annually. And so administration was of the belief, given council's desire to support projects that are currently underway at developments such as Allendale in terms of their capacity to attract possible tenants, that these changes could be accommodated in a way that's much easier, given the materiality of their impact on the residential class.
Thank you. I recognize Doug.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Earl, you stole my thunder. I looked at this as, yeah, this is not an immediate implementation. We have a year to actually take it to the public because I agree with you, Cynthia. We certainly don't want to impose this. You know, there's going to have to be a lot of public discussion about this. It's the whole paper, Alan, that you created was excellent, lots of data. And I found out how difficult this was to try to compare apples to apples. When I tried to analyze this a couple of years ago and I went, wow, this is a bigger issue than I thought. I think one of the more important tables, though, is probably table six, which is the taxes and charges on representative house. So my question, Alan, is, is there a, do they have that sort of comparison in the CRD for businesses? Because, you know, you take a thousand square foot coffee shop here, for example, a thousand square foot coffee shop in Esquimalt, for example. And then, you know, of course, the total tax burden is, you know, the mill rate times the assessment value. So to get that apples to apple, that's probably the closest you're going to get. I know there's another, a number of things that go into that burden, but do they, my question to Alan is, do they have a similar comparison like that on a, on a typical representative business between the municipalities and the CRD?
I haven't been able to find a comparative chart like that. I think back to Counselor Day's request is there has to be a little bit of normalization of the overall rates, but per a typical business, there's been nothing I've seen that would align with that. No.
Okay. So I'm supportive of Counselor Parkinson. We have to start this discussion at some time. And, and to me, this is the problem that we normally get is that we don't have enough notice to actually discuss it and everything happens in a short order. But we're giving ourselves a full year to have all the proper discussions. So I think it is appropriate to discuss this at this point in time. And I do support his recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. I'll recognize Michael. You're muted, Michael.
All right, a couple of small points about Counselor Parkinson's remarks. At first, he said the target would be 3.67, which was our business tax ratio in two thousand and ten. Then I think you mistakenly said 3.64 the second time. I'm assuming that you intend 3.67. But what I would ask you to provide us with is what information other than the obvious discussion of public input, what other information is needed in order to discuss the light industrial and the recreational nonprofit? Moving on to the point about the public consultation, I would point out that in the last ten years, the rate has swung from 3.67 to 4.51 with no public discussion whatsoever. And now that we're asking to swing it back to where it was, now we have public discussion that seems to be unfair. And I think what we should be concerned about is the fact that this swing from 3.67 to 4.51 occurred with no discussion, not even at the council table. Further, I would say that a year ago, I brought this up, more than a year ago, and we were told, well, we can't discuss it till next budget time. And there was a resolution saying it should be discussed at the beginning of budget time. And this is not the beginning of budget time. Now, I understand all kinds of reasons why this may have occurred, but what it amounts to is that there's been more than a year's delay in even starting this process. And now we're counseling a year's delay before it might go ahead. I don't think this looks very sincere to the businesses. We spent ten years raising the rate. And as soon as we want to lower it, all of a sudden, there's a lot of delays. I'm for beginning the swing this year. It won't be a big impact on residential. It's spread over five years. Then we can go to the public and we can revise it the following year. But I think we need to indicate that we do intend to do something to address what's been done to them in the last ten years. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. I will now recognize Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's a lot to take in here. It's very clear to me that we need to do something with these taxation rates because they are inconsistent with our neighbors, which does certainly create issues of competitiveness or perhaps businesses that choose to, that are migratory in nature and can up and move to a neighboring community to save a few bucks. I wouldn't blame them. So I agree with Michael to some extent that I would like to see us move on this. As far as our current time period here and the issues with communicating with our public, and I see it maybe slightly different, is like, we are here to act on behalf of our community. And I do believe that we do need to show leadership and we should be taking some action. And that's not to hide anything or, you know, to obfuscate, but it certainly, I don't remember people showing up, you know, to protest tax reductions, which is what we're looking at here. So I think the risk is minimal in that regard. But so I do believe that something needs to be done. The sooner the better. At least the beginnings, sooner the better. I would agree with Michael that I'd love to see something start happening this year, although I think this is going to be a difficult budget season, as I'm sure we're all, we're all aware of. So those are my comments. I am in support of Counselor Parkinson's motions as he's described them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll just remind us that there isn't actually a motion on the table yet, but I'll be looking for one PDQ. So I've got.
My interpretation, he used the words that motion and described what he wanted. So I would argue that he did present a motion. It just wasn't seconded maybe at the time?
No, there's no seconded, secondary required at committee, but I didn't take that way as the chair. But he's certainly able to make a motion when we, when we get back down to him.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, may I?
Alan, yes.
Yeah, just to be clear, I heard the word tax reduction. I just want to be clear, this would be a reallocation amongst tax classes and not an absolute reduction. Yes, for one class, it would be a reduction, but neutral overall. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Mayor Martin?
Thank you, Chair. I'm not going to repeat what everybody else has said. I guess the thing that I would like to reinforce with everyone, though, is that this isn't just about businesses that are in the community today, but it's about attracting the business for tomorrow. And, you know, without divulging anything, clearly, things are still in camera. But, you know, there are projects that are looking and comparing Callwood to other resident or other communities. And I know I have had individual discussions with each of you about that. And I think it's important that we realize that we are going to be in a hyper competitive market when COVID nineteen is over and that when we start to see money coming in from the provincial and federal governments, when we start to see growth, this is going to be one of the determining factors of if our community is successful compared to other communities within this region. And so I would really want to reinforce that with each of you that we need to be thinking about that. And if we're thinking about the long term success of the city of Callwood, this will eventually actually increase revenue to the city, not decrease revenue because we will see it an overall capture of more tax revenue coming into our community if we are competitive. If we're not competitive, I, we will struggle, pure and simple. So I just wanted to reinforce that part of it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Rob. Recognize Cynthia. You're on mute.
There we go. We are speaking here tonight about the split in taxation between business and residential. So, and I'm not, I don't wish to argue in any way. I just wanted to point out that a number of comments have been around how to support businesses in Callwood and what's happened with their tax rates for businesses over the last ten years. But if you look at table six and look at the taxation for representative house in Callwood between two thousand and ten and two thousand and nineteen, a residential has gone from two thousand nine hundred and twenty five to three thousand seven hundred and fifty one. So businesses are certainly not alone in having experienced increases in taxation. Residents are also experiencing that. And the, I guess what I'm looking for, I want Callwood to do well and there to be lots of opportunities for employment in Callwood. And what I've seen in the past has been a number of these classes have had, you know, good rates for a number of years, but they haven't necessarily had a lot of employees that are being supported by those rates. So I would be very interested in seeing us look at some other mechanisms for supporting and drawing businesses to Callwood that look at tax holidays or options for, you know, if you bring X number of employees, you get X number of reduction for X amount of time to actually target what we're trying to, to actually get in Callwood rather than it simply being if you're in this tax category, you get this deal.
Great, thank you. I'll recognize Stewart.
Thank you, Chair. A lot of good discussion. Couple of the points, I think, I think, you know, your initial comments, Cynthia, about how people are struggling and stuff like that and how we have to be mindful of the residential taxes we're paying. I believe that'll be a fulsome discussion later in the evening when we get into the financial plan for the year and the overall budget. Here, I think what we're doing is just trying to, I guess, be competitive, rectify some inconsistencies in our tax ratios. And I think, I think as Dean says, you know, we're elected to show some leadership. And I think this is absolutely the correct way to go with the spin off benefits the mayor alluded to of being more competitive. So I'm pretty happy with that. Michael caught me out. I do think we should set the, set the target rate in five years is 3.67. That's what it was in two thousand and ten. Chasing a CRD average that moves around every year is just too complicated for my small brain. As to the reason that I was prepared to delay the light industrial and nonprofit and recreational things. Again, it's just, I'm changing something that I don't understand. I don't understand how Callwood ever got to a point where our light industry rate was thirty two compared to an average of eleven. Was there any rationale for that or it just seems bizarre to me? I guess I'd kind of like to know what the thinking was at the time before I changed it. But, and again, just what's included in the recreational nonprofit were just matters of interest to me. Probably for those reasons, it'll make sense to maybe split this into three motions. And if we're ready, I'd be, I'd be prepared to make a motion that we move to a business tax ratio of 3.67 over the next five years, starting this year. That'd be my motion.
Thank you. So we do have a motion on the table. I will look for discussion. And Michael, I'm going to lower your hand. So if you want to speak on this motion, please put your hand back up. And Michael, you're first on the list. And you're still, you're muted.
I just wanted to speak in an unmuted fashion to the issue of the fact that residential taxes have gone up and business taxes have gone up. Absolutely true. But some numbers that I analyzed in a spreadsheet, which I'm happily to share with anybody after the meeting in time before next meeting, is that the ratio of the total percentage tax collected, so in other words, the percentage, the ratio between the percentage of the total tax collected that business pays and the percentage of total assessed value that business is, that ratio has increased steadily with just one small blip over the last ten years. So the actual dollar per assessed value has obviously increased, but the ratio between the percentage that business is paying compared to the percentage of the assessed value, they are, they are, has gone up. Whereas for residential, it has been remarkably steady for ten years. In two thousand and eleven, it was point eight three. And in two thousand and nineteen, it is point eight four. That's pretty steady. For in business in two thousand and ten, it was two point eight two. And it's now three point six nine. So this is not the business tax ratio. This is a different ratio. But I think it's the, actually, the most important ratio. What it says is that business taxes have gone up more quickly than residential taxes. And again, without any discussion. So I'll be supporting Stewart's motion.
Thank you, Michael. I'll recognize Mayor Martin.
Thank you. I don't know if I can support this motion just from a standpoint until I have staff answer this question for me. So staff, can you please tell me the difference between the motion that is presently on the table comparison to the recommendation that staff be directed to return with a five year phase program beginning in two thousand and twenty one to bring the tax, tax, business tax rate to the regional average? I will need to understand the material consequences to, to the motion in comparison to what staff is recommending, recommending. Can you tell me what that would be?
Yeah, in terms of starting this year for the next five years, it would basically be a straight line move from zero to the five hundred and ninety one thousand, Mayor. So your impact this year would be a hundred and twenty ish in your shift from your business tax rate to your residential tax class. If that's what you're asking, if I was clear.
So through the chair, so I, could I please, so what I want to clarify is, is the staff recommendation would, would be the reduction of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year in income. That would be a burden that would basically be put onto the other classes, which we've already identified that ninety nine percent of that class or ninety seven percent of that class is residential compared to the motion that is on the table right now, which would be a consequence of five hundred and ninety thousand dollars to residential. Is that correct?
Correct. The original recommendation was yes, to start it next year and move one fifth of the way there over five years. Correct.
Yeah, if that's the case, I can't support the motion as it presently is. I believe it needs to be. Yeah, if if that's the case, I can't support the motion as it presently is. I believe it needs to be. I don't believe that as we get into this further into this, we're going to be looking at opportunities to reduce our tax rates for our residentials. And we're going to be putting ourselves in a $590,000 hole right off to begin with. If we look at that, I'm comfortable with doing a phased approach of 120,000 through the five years. But I'm certainly not, uh, uh, in interested in doing it all in one year.
Rob, my, uh, I might interject. I I believe Stuart's motion was to face it in over five years, starting this year.
If I your face, then I'm I'm comfortable. I what I heard that was that it was it was three point that we were getting into it in one year.
Uh, so correct me if I'm wrong, Stuart, but I took the motion as a staff be directed to return with a five year phase program beginning in 2020 to bring our business tax rates to the to 3.7%.
Okay, thank you. If it's a phased approach, then I'm supportive.
Yeah.
Okay, no, that's, uh, that's correct, Gordy. I think I think that, uh, there's minor differences whether we go with 5% or or just a straight line thing. The straight line thing works well for me. I think the big difference that others may wish to discuss is I think the staff motion called for it to start in 2021, and I'm suggesting it should start in 2020.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I recognize Dean, and then I don't see any of the speakers have another question.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, I I I'm going to support this motion, but, uh, in 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 hindsight, uh, Stuart, I I think our discussions about this year's taxes are going to be extensive. And I just wonder if we should, uh, extend that to starting next year to make our, you know, to to not overcomplicate our discussions about this current tax year. I throw that back at, uh, at the mover or Mr. Chair.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, while he ponders that, I'll go to Doug.
Uh, I was, uh, thank you very much, Counselor Logan. I I definitely agree with what you said. Because I'm not supportive. Well, we'll get into that next discussion about tax increases for for the year. And because of the very the very principle that I'm going in there with right now, I wouldn't be supportive of this happening this year. I I don't think we need to add any more expenses for this year. Uh, it's going to be a challenging year. So I I I was more supportive of of starting it in 2021 per the original recommendation in the in the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Michael?
I would just like to point out, um, that we're not adding any expense to this year with this motion. As, um, as the Director of Finance said, we are, we're just transferring it to a different part of the budget. And it's certainly possible in setting the tax increase or lack thereof to offset this increase. This increase is is quite small and could easily be offset for the residential people, uh, for this year.
Thank you. I I too will be supporting the motion. I think we 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 need to finally put our money where our mouths mouth is and, um, recognize that our small businesses are are suffering and their employers as well. And they employ some some Callwood residents, and it's it's important that we, uh, we do support them. We keep talking about it, but now we need to action it, and never is going to be a good time. So I so I will be supporting it. So with that, uh, I will be asking people that are opposed to the motion to, um, to raise a virtual hand. Okay. So Counselor Day and Counselor Kobiyashi are opposed to the motion. So the motion passes. So I am looking for a, uh, a recommendation regarding the light industrial and recreational tax rate. Counselor Day, did you?
I just, um, for for everyone's benefit, could we stick to one method of calling the vote rather than using the virtual raising your hands? I I I would far rather that you, uh, asked for who is opposed.
I I did ask for who's opposed.
Yes, but you asked virtually. So no one can hear that who's watching from the public.
And that's why I, uh, I was verbal when I said Counselor Day and Counselor Kobiyashi had opposed the motion. So the public knew.
Yeah, I'm.
I actually stuck up my hand because I wanted the motion reread, please. Cause I'm trying to figure out what year it's starting here.
So the motion was that staff be directed to return with a five year phase program beginning in 2020 to bring our business tax rates to the to 3.67%. So the motion did pass. Uh, Mayor Martin?
Thank you. Uh, I will just make a motion that staff be directed to return with light industry and recreation tax rates that are or below the average.
So we do have a motion on the table, uh, discussion, uh, Stuart.
Oh, okay. I was, that was up there before. Um, you know, I'm neutral on this. As I said, it's more curiosity thing. It's just, it's such a, um, an outlier. The the the, um, light industrial rates are 32. I mean, they look ridiculous when you look at everybody else's in the region. And I have to have some faith in past councils to think they did them for some reason, which I'd kind of like to understand. Not a hill I'm going to die on, die on. If everybody's happy with it, that works for me, too. I I think we will end up changing them. So, uh, I guess I really don't have much to say on this. I'll I'll support the motion as the mayor maker.
Thank you. Cynthia?
Thank you. Um, I will be opposing this motion and not because I disagree with it particularly in in the outcomes, but I really do not have faith in these averages whatsoever. They it it is not apples to apples. You can't, uh, I've been through this six ways from Sunday, uh, at different times for different reasons, where we look at similar sized municipalities, but, um, we are not all the same. We offer different services and and I think, um, looking outside of Callwood at the average of what other people are paying has very little to do with what our situation is here in Callwood. I I understand its applicability to, uh, businesses who could choose to operate in a different location. But I, uh, I just, you know, I do not support this way of comparing ourselves. When we're, I would just like to deal with facts that are true and verifiable in Callwood. So for that reason, I I will be opposing this motion because we we need to talk about our history and our truth and, uh, not the way it is, uh, somewhere else in the CRD. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, seeing no further hands, I will, uh, ask for those that are opposed to the motion to raise a virtual hand, please. Okay, I see Counselor Day as, uh, opposed. Therefore, I will, uh, the motion passes. And there's a third one, that staff be directed to return with a draft tax policy for, uh, consideration. Alan, I'm I'm assuming that that's still appropriate.
All right. Yes, that's, um, still appropriate. We'll bring it all back.
Great, thank you. Um, Mayor Martin?
I'll make that motion.
Any discussion? Let me just clear these hands here.
Raise.
Doug, you wanted to speak?
Yes, please.
I saw your hands. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Uh, the only reason I'm going to oppose this because I I don't even understand what this is. So I don't know what I'm voting on because I I really don't understand what recreation and and nonprofit tax rates. And until I understand that, I mean, you know, because my feeling right now, as I look at this, and I think we have a a lot of NPOs here, and they don't pay the 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 best rates anyways. And if 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 at all, and so I'm I'm just uncomfortable voting for something. I'm not too sure what's in that class to tell you the truth.
So are you speaking to the motion that we've already passed?
No, no, just on, we're talking about recreation and nonprofit, right?
So we've just passed the motion that staff be directed to return with light industrial and recreational tax rates that are, okay. Uh, so the new motion is that staff be directed to return with a draft tax policy for our consideration.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I thought we were talking about recreation, nonprofit. No. We did we jump that?
That that was included in the motion that Samir Martin had made earlier, that we just passed.
Okay.
Uh, Cynthia?
Thank you. Um, just for clarity, um, our our entire discussion here tonight has, uh, revolved around, um, averages with with the CRD and, uh, other municipalities who have a completely different set of services that they offer. And we've talked about, um, the properties in specific classes without having those particular properties identified for us. So I don't feel that everyone is aware of all of the, um, possible, um, repercussions of the decisions that are being made here tonight. So perhaps we could, uh, get some further clarity on that.
Oh, Counselor, Counselor Day, you kind of faded out there. Oh.
She looks frozen.
You're frozen. I wonder if you've lost your, had an internet interruption there. Maybe we will, um, uh, Robert, let's, uh, let's hear what you have to say. We'll see if Cynthia comes back.
Uh, thank you, Chair Logan. The idea behind the tax policy is to have counsel to articulate the type of information and the type of direction, uh, you would like each time your tax rates are brought before you. And this would allow counsel to describe, for example, if you would like to compare services between municipalities or attempt to compare services between municipalities. Or if if there are comparisons outside of the capital regional district that you're interested and or if there are particular tax classes where you would like to understand the scale of businesses or the number of businesses in each of those classes. And so with a policy, administration would have greater information about the information that you need as an elected body in setting the grades each year.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Martin?
Thank you. Um, and I I guess, uh, through the chair, I guess I'll direct this with staff because, um, I know this question was asked before, and it was my understanding that when we're talking about, for example, the, uh, the light industry and recreational, uh, that only represented about $76,000 in income for the city. And I'm just curious if that is, is that correct or is that not correct?
I'm just, uh, just checking this to Mayor.
It's 76,000 for light industry and another 50,000 for recreation nonprofit. Page seven.
Sorry, Chair, if I can do, I'll just continue to look for that. I guess what my point was, I'm I'm going to go with Counselor Kobiyashi's numbers that they were correct. Um, so on a $20 million budget, you know, if we're talking about $76,000 worth of of tax revenue in under that class under light industry, I don't think it's a significant, uh, thing that we need to be looking at, especially when we look at comparison to what we would would have the opportunity to be attracting into our community. And the amount of revenue that will be brought into the community through a taxation at a lower rate that will be attractive to 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 this class. And I think that's one of the things that we need to, uh, continue to to, uh, focus on is that that revenue of $76,000 could be exponentially much larger if we were able to be attractive, um, to to certain projects, um, that I know that other municipalities are also chasing.
Thank you. Uh, Dean?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I think there's a flaw that's been said already, but I mean, I see this motion that we are seeking information and we are seeking some direction and some comparisons. And what are those comparators? And I would love to to hear what staff have to say, you know, and I'm interested, uh, in some comparisons beyond the capital region as the CAO was indicating. Um, we oft draw comparisons with places like White Rock and stuff like that. So I mean, let's, let's get out of the CRD and have a look at, uh, maybe what some other similar sized communities are doing in in this regard to help us establish our policy. Uh, so I'm in favor of this, and I see Cynthia's back. So, uh, back.
Okay, uh, Stuart, and then I would like to, uh, call the question, uh, so we can get on with the the next.
Cynthia, finish.
Yeah, I'm back. I don't know what happened. My internet, uh, kicked me out. And, uh, I don't know. It was weird. Um, so I'm sorry, just, uh, are we still on the same question?
Yes, we're, yeah.
Okay, um, so I I remain, uh, I guess, very concerned that, uh, this whole system isn't working terribly well for me. And I don't feel like the community is engaged at this point. Uh, so as long as we're going to carry on, um, not, um, recognizing the community interest in it, um, and using just vague averages rather than real facts, I'm going to remain opposed.
Thank you, Cynthia. You know, I I I would take a bit of an issue, and I think all of council is interested in, um, and the impact on the on the on the general public. And unfortunately, that these are the times we are living in because of the circumstances that that have been, uh, dealt to us, uh, thanks to COVID-19. And we are trying our level best to absolutely include everybody and recognize that there may be hiccups from time to time, but certainly we recognize that the the business of the city must move on, and it's not an excuse to delay stuff. But, uh, that, you know, that's, that's just my opinion. I don't see any any further hands, so I will call the question and ask for you to raise your virtual hand if you are opposed to the motion that staff be directed to return with a draft, uh, tax policy for their consideration. So I see, I see two opposed.
Gordy. Sorry, Gordy.
Yeah, I, yeah, I would like to, unless you've got something new, Stuart, I would like to actually call the question.
Yeah, well, I was just going to suggest that, uh, with what we've done tonight, we sort of established significant tax policy for this year. Perhaps we could just put a date on when we'd like to get this report back on the tax policy. I was just going to suggest that we should ask for the third quarter of this year to have, uh, staff's recommendation on a tax policy to discuss in plenty of time before next year.
Okay, uh, Mayor Martin, I believe you made the motion. Are you, uh, okay with a friendly amendment?
I am.
Okay. Uh, so with that friendly amendment to have this, uh, uh, report on the draft tax policy in the third quarter of this year, uh, I will now. report on the draft tax policy in the third quarter of this year, I will now call the question. Those that are opposed to the motion, raise your hand, virtual hand. I see councillor Day is opposed, so the motion passes. Okay, so I will move to item 4.2, 2020 to 2024 draft financial plan, and I invite Jen Heaping, the manager of finance, to introduce the item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one moment and I will share my screen. Okay, so tonight is intended to be a continuation of budget deliberations that started earlier this year. I'll just take a brief moment here to recap. And then we'll we'll get into some some tax scenarios for consideration. To date, committee has reviewed the draft financial plan in its entirety, primarily between the February 18th and February 25th Committee of the Whole Meetings. The original intention of tonight's budget meeting was to review the draft financial plan in summary and and just highlight any updates or changes that came out of previous committee meetings. In light of the COVID-19 pandemic, staff anticipate that tonight will now be focused on discussing additional taxation scenarios should committee wish to recommend changes to council. And on that note, we are seeking that should committee wish to recommend any changes to the draft financial plan that committee make those recommendations tonight. Staff will then incorporate any changes into the draft financial plan bylaw that we intend to publish next week as part of the April 27 council agenda package. So as it stands, we are hopeful of bringing forward the draft financial plan bylaw to council on April 27. And we anticipate that we may require a special meeting of council in order to adopt both the financial plan bylaw and the tax rate bylaw by May 15. I'll just pause. Are there any questions just based on that that quick recap and where we're at in our 2020 budget timeline?
Thank you. I see Michael.
Yeah, I just had a question about that May 15 date. I may be getting confused about what the province is doing versus talking about, but I thought there was some talk of delaying that date.
Thank you for that question. Staff are aware. So the province has issued a couple of circulars. They have amended our we have a number of items statutory deadlines that are due by May 15. One of those includes approval of the prior year financial statements. The province has announced deferral of that due date this year. But in terms of tax rates, we are still looking to have those adopted by May 15. And we'll get into this in a bit more detail later on tonight. But ultimately, if we do not amend our property tax due date and we remain consistent with a July 2 due date, staff require that those rates are set by May 15 in order for us to issue our property tax notices in sufficient time for our current property tax due date.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Stuart.
Jen, I noticed that on your process overview, sort of it went from tax rate review tonight, which I think we talked about a little bit. And then the draft 2020 draft increase in COVID considerations. Are those things we should be discussing before we get into the the nitty gritty of the financial?
Yes, no, thanks for mentioning that. So the intention is that in red is kind of highlighting what we'll be looking at tonight. So we will revisit where our 2020 tax increase currently sits with, which is 3.52%. We will also review impacts to the draft budget as a result of this this current pandemic, both risks to the city's revenue sources and also potential scenarios to either defer or reduce the proposed tax increases. And and we will be going through that information tonight. And staff's desire is that should committee wish to recommend any changes that we receive that recommendation tonight. And we will be providing information to aid in that discussion.
So I guess would seem to me we might want to know where we're going before we get further. I mean, I would think in these these times and these considerations, we should be looking at a 0% tax increase overall. Is that something that's feasible? And is it affordable by the rest of council, I guess, is a question.
And that's the discussion this, that is the discussion that staff is looking to facilitate tonight. So we have prepared a scenario for committee's consideration that does result in a 0% tax increase in 2020.
So I'm jumping the gun. Is that what you're telling me?
No, not at all. You're you're clarifying what we will be reviewing tonight.
You're very kind, very kind.
Kindly to put it that way, Jen.
Okay, and councillor Day.
Thank you. Just a quick question. I'd like to, and and maybe you already have it planned. And if so, I'm fine with waiting till you're planning to tell us about it, but I would like to know what the balances of the reserve funds are.
Absolutely. Thank you for asking. Those are stated. Just bear with me. On page 75 of the draft financial plan, that will be a good reference for where our reserves are projected to be based on the draft financial plan that we have coming into tonight's discussion.
Okay, I don't see any further hands. Cynthia, you're okay?
Yeah, sorry, I'm just trying to balance too many papers on too small.
So with that, I'll just take a moment to comment on the changes that have been made to our draft financial plan between what was originally presented at the beginning of budget deliberations in early February and the second version that staff published as part of this agenda. So we have made a number of changes to the draft plan, primarily as a result of committee recommendations and also as a result of some improved budget information that we have received since we met in late February. So turning to our special projects, committee made a recommendation that we add a $10,000 heritage commission budget for heritage commission related project work. That has been done to the 2020 draft plan. In addition, staff have also put forward a development guidelines project. And that is a project that is looking to span between this year and into next year. And the engineering standards and specifications staff have pushed that project out from 2020 to 2021 and revised the budget to $60,000 for 2021. The city's capital plan has also been amended. Committee had recommended that the community garden greenhouse budget item be removed, and that has been done. We had two 2021 construction budgets for both the Machosen Road Improvement Ben Homer to Kotlow and the Painter Road Improvement projects. Those costs of construction figures have been revised. And I will clarify that the Machosen Road total cost of construction figure is 1.245 million that we will be splitting evenly over two years. The draft plan shows it as 2.245 million and we will revise that in the next version of the draft. In addition, the Latoria VMP Intersection Capital Project and the Allendale Works and Services Capital Projects, we've grossed up those project budgets to represent 100% of the estimated construction costs. And we've had a corresponding increase in funding sources that represents the developers contribution to those projects. With all of that said, I will comment, the current draft financial plan does not propose deferral of capital spend in light of the COVID-19 pandemic. Note, deferral of any of our special or capital projects would not result in a reduction in property taxation as these projects are all funded by way of grants or reserves or developer contributions. I'll take pause if there's any questions. Otherwise, I'll turn to just a breakdown of where the property tax lift sits right now.
I think you can continue on, Jen.
Okay, so we remain looking at a 3.52% increase to property taxation over 2019. Now, 1.46% of that increase is in order to fund proposed service increases. So these are those new services that we highlighted as we went through the service plans. And I will comment that this is the net increase to the cost of those services after we apply the city's new construction taxation revenue to fund to fund those increases. We're also looking at a 1.06% increase. This is the increase necessary in order to fund existing service levels. So in other words, it's the increase required for core contractual obligations, union contracts, and it is it is offset by a projected increase in our core operating revenues. In particular, the city's Pilt revenue, which we do still anticipate to benefit from that increase. Lastly, the city's sustainable infrastructure policy calls for an additional 1% in property taxation annually to set aside to reserves. And so that that there is is the breakdown of the proposed tax increase as it was introduced earlier this year in in budget deliberations. So in the last few weeks, city staff, you know, we've gotten together and we've analyzed the draft financial plan in context of this pandemic. And we've identified a number of areas of risk. So when highlighting our revenue risk, we do anticipate a reduction in building and and development permit revenue. We don't have specifics, you know, we we have estimated a reduction and and I'll bring the numbers up in a moment when we jump into the Excel scenario. I will comment on that note, you'll see that the impact on our budget is both commented as reduced operating funding and also reduced transfer to reserves. That's in part in recent years as the city has experienced a surge in building and development in the area, we have been setting aside a portion of that revenue to our reserve funds. So with the projected decrease that we will experiencing that we anticipate to experience, we will offset that decrease by a decreased transfer to reserves. We will be monitoring building and development permit revenues closely this year. And we're going to mitigate reduction not only by way of a decreased transfer to reserves, but also in related expenditure in those two areas. Casino revenue. So we receive approximately $300,000 annually from the View Royal Casino under a cost sharing agreement. We transfer that funding to our reserves. We absolutely do expect a reduction in the revenue we receive as the casino is closed for the foreseeable future. And that too will impact our reserve transfers. We've mentioned investment income and property tax penalty revenue. Again, this, both of these two revenue risks just depend on some of the decisions that we make in the coming weeks. Depending on whether or not we elect to change our due date and or to alter the property tax penalty that we levy. Currently, we levy a 10% penalty the day following the due date. That may impact the revenue collected there. And also depending on if we adjust due dates, that may impact our cash flow, which in turn may impact the cash that we can set aside and invest. And again, both of those factors would impact our proposed transfers to reserves. We did want to take a moment as well just to view the property tax increase in consideration with our the city's service level. And recognize that there are alternatives that committee and intern council may wish to consider. So if we maintain existing services, we do require an additional $150,000 approximately, which is the increase of 1.06%. The alternative is to reduce existing services or fund that increase by way of an alternative measure, which could be a one time funding from reserves. Similar thought can be with the increased services. Action alternative could be to either defer the increase to a future year or abandon the proposed service increase. Or continue with the increased services and look to a funding alternative by way of a one time transfer from reserves. You know, should committee wish to do this, staff will highlight that a one time transfer from reserves will simply defer that property tax increase to a future year. And lastly, the the 1% increase to specifically fund our sustainable infrastructure. If we elect not to levy that 1% increase, that will just, that will push out our our desired you know, timeline to to reach our sustainable levels for replacing our existing infrastructure. So these are just concepts to keep in mind as we review scenarios for consideration. And so with that, I'll take pause for any questions. And then I will will bring up an Excel document where staff have reviewed one, the impact of the the risks to our revenues and also areas where committee way may wish to defer expenditure in order to achieve a reduced property tax increase in 2020.
Thanks, Jen. I'll recognize Michael. And I bet she's on pause or on mute.
Sorry about that.
There you go.
Again. So I have a fairly complicated question about page 19, the table you just dealt with. So when you say that if we don't do the increase in taxes this year, we will simply be deferring it. I guess the alternative in the case of line one is if if we never do this tax increase, then that's a permanent setback in providing services. In other words, our services will in the future be reduced by that one year's worth of improvement. And with line two, it's a similar thing in that, but instead of of the services being less, if we abandon that, they won't improve the way we anticipate. This is assuming we never actually had this 3.52 back in. And then the 1% to reserve, obviously, we have to catch that up at some point in the future. We are going to have to replace old services, so you can't escape that one. The way I've put that, I mean, am I somewhere close to the truth?
Yes. Simply put, if if we can, we if we choose to maintain existing services and we choose not to levy the 1.0% tax increase required to fund those existing services, we will simply be deferring that next necessary increase to a future year.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Michael. Mayor Martin.
Thank you. Can I please just get through you to Jen? Can I just get a clarification? Let's just hypothetically say that this committee shows to do everything that's on this page that's in front of us right now so that that we basically eliminated eliminated the 3.52 lift. How does that fit into? I'm trying to understand how would how would that fit into the revenue risks that you've identified beforehand? If if we do all this work, is there? Do we need to worry about those revenue risks from a lift standpoint? Or we've established a lift for 2020? And it would be at zero if if we decided that this is the direction we were going?
That's a really good question. When we get into the detail in Excel, we will highlight for you the net impact of the identified revenue risk. And just based on the revenue risk alone, we do anticipate a 0.5% additional tax increase required. So before consideration of other either operating expense savings or deferments, there is anticipated to be an impact due to that revenue risk. The majority of the risk to revenue is impacting our transfers to reserves.
Thanks, Jen. I don't see any more hands, so perhaps just move into your to the spreadsheet.
Okay. So where I have highlighted right here on the screen, this is where we last left off. So last year, our financial plan called for $14.7 million in property taxation. Tonight, we're looking at a financial plan that calls for just over $15.2 million in taxation, which drives that 3.52% tax lift for approximately $517,000. We have identified a number of line items. And this is, I should comment that this was our chief financial officer, you know, meeting with department directors. In addition, you know, reviewing this draft plan with our CAO and identifying not only our revenue risk areas, but potential considerations that could reduce that proposed property tax increase. So we'll start by reviewing. We've identified, and again, this is estimated, you know, based on discussions we've had and what we're aware of right now. Overall, we've got approximately $690,000 in revenue at risk. The majority of that $614,000 is impacting our transfer to reserves. As Counselor Day asked earlier in the meeting, you know, right now, we're projecting that we'd have an ending balance of approximately $27.7 million in reserves. Now that we've identified these revenue risks, that 27.7 would be reduced down to about 27.1. In addition, there's a potential net impact of $75,000. And I will take a moment and go through each of these line items. So revenue risk alone, in ensuring that we have a balanced budget in place, we would be looking at not a 3.52% tax lift, but a 4.02% tax lift to account for this lost revenue right here. Our new construction revenue, we have proposed that this is to be funding either increased service delivery, where there's been demand for increased service delivery, or it funds transfers to reserves. Our revised role that was received a couple of weeks ago, we are looking at collecting approximately $430,000. We had previously estimated based on our completed role. So there is a minor increase in revenue generation there. Spring cleanup revenue is included in the draft budget, approximately $17,000. This provides partial funding for the direct costs related with the spring cleanup program. Should committee wish to recommend that there are no fees in 2020, that foregone revenue would need to be considered. Development and engineering revenue. Again, we've projected a reduction in budgeted revenues. And down below, we have projected where we anticipate some expenditure savings because of delaying the rehiring of either a current vacancy or a projected projected vacancy later this year. In addition, we had a number of new service increases proposed, and we have identified some deferment of expenditure by way of deferring both the increases in policing and the proposed increases in in fire services, deferring those to 2021. And policing, again, we would then defer the 2021 expenditure to 2022 as well. The draft financial plan proposes the mid-year hire of an engagement assistant. And we have proposed that that could be deferred another three months and defer that spend into 2021. The draft budget had also proposed additional expenditure to enhance the city's GIS function. Should that expenditure be deferred to 2021, that too would result in in a $50,000 reduction needed for 2020. The proposed reduction in transfers to reserves have all been commented on with the exception of the road infrastructure program. This was a new capital infrastructure program that was proposed to start for 2020. Annual taxation of $30,000 is intended to be set aside in reserves. And the city would then draw on that reserve funding for one-off localized improvements throughout the city. So should we defer the introduction of that program? That there would be a $30,000 savings. So overall, the net impact of those items that have been proposed for consideration could result in reducing the property tax increase from 3.52% to 0%. Now that being said, as we mentioned earlier, any deferral in expenditure will simply defer that property tax increase to a future year. So rather than looking at a, you know, proposed four or 5% increase for 2021, you could potentially be looking at a 7% increase. And so with that, I will look to committee ultimately for discussion and for recommendation on whether or not any changes should be reflected in the draft financial plan that will form the bylaw that we plan to bring forward April 27.
Great. Thank you very much, Jen. I've recognized Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few comments. I love all this stuff. Thank you so much, Jen. I understand it. I do believe that, you know, these are unprecedented times in our community. And I don't think we've experienced anything like this. And because of that, we're we're, you know, forging new territory. Our we're impacted from one corner of our community to the to the other. And that includes both our residents residences and as we had a discussion earlier about our small businesses and even medium-sized businesses. So many of these people are out of work at this point in time. And many may be out of work and lose their jobs altogether if businesses go out go out of business. So the more we can do to support our residents and our businesses, I think the better off we'll be in putting our best foot forward for recovery. I personally believe that we should be minimizing taxes increases. However, I'm cautious because I would hate to see a double-digit increase next year or the year after. So I think we do need to take a measured approach. Unlike other levels of government that cannot run a deficit. So it concerns me when I see that it really is going to take a 1% increase for us to remain in the black. So having said all that, I think this is going to require some creativity on our part. I do think deferring stuff that we can defer into future years should be considered, but we do need to put the lens on it that I think, you know, a 10 or 12% increase in in the next coming year or two is going to be an untenable position. So that concludes my comments, really, Mr. Chair. But I do believe that there's lots of great savings here that I see that we can we can explore. And I do believe things like the infrastructure 1% increase that we could defer, push that out another year. Because really, we don't know how long the polypropylene pipes are going to last anyways. And I think the risk is minimal. So having said that, I I I bring it back to the table and to yourself for for sort of discussion.
Great. Thank you, Dean. And I'll recognize Cynthia now.
Thank you. Really appreciate the the hard work that's gone into the presentation here tonight. The one, there's a couple of areas that concern me. And and I'll just frame it by, you know, I don't, I don't think this is going to be over quickly. And, you know, if if history is any indication, the 1930s were really hard on on everyone. And in retrospect, a lot of economists have predicted that, you know, had governments acted in the past in the in the 30s to provide some social safety nets, it wouldn't have been as bad. So hopefully, rolling upper sleeves and getting right into it is boding well for the future. But that said, there's a couple of items that are on this list that do concern me, particularly the the fire service delay to the hires and also the RCMP. Because what we're seeing over and over again is how important those services are to our community. So I'll preface it by saying those those are two things that I feel like this might not be the best time to be doing that. And a couple of opportunities that I don't see on the list. I couldn't find my spot in my mass of papers here. But if memory serves me correctly, I think there's about $80,000 in the budget for geotechnical investigations for Latoria Road, for example. And I think those could more easily be pushed off to the future than some of these other things that impact the daily lives of our citizens. So when I was reviewing this, our financial plan documents before this agenda came out, I was looking at our five-year plan. And particularly, Latoria and the intersection with VMP, they have big implications this year, but even bigger next year. And my concern is around knowing that this is a long haul to get through this that we look at next year as well as this year. Because we can easily push stuff off for a year. But what happens when the year that follows is also a struggling year? We saw that in 2008, 2007 and eight, we probably weren't really recovering until 2010. So I I really wonder, has there been any consideration to the next two years in your deliberations?
That's a good point, Cynthia. Jen?
Thank you for that question. Yes, so we absolutely have considered the impact on what would be year two of this financial plan in detail. Years three to five, we have not looked at in detail. By deferring the required tax increase to fund both existing and or increased services, we are looking at an over 7% lift in 2021. In addition, we have reviewed special and capital projects with a very minor exception for some of our team's labor works on some capital infrastructure. There is no property taxation funding for these projects. So deferring Latoria Road geotechnical works, for example, that would not impact the the tax increase that is projected to be funded by way of the city's reserves.
If I could follow up then, just on that reserve funds issue, I we've been historically in the position of of having very low reserves. And it was a real struggle to get back to a better position for the city. We had some double-digit increases to get where we are today. So I'm very concerned about using the reserves and not having a plan to to replenish them. Do you have a plan to replenish the reserves?
On the on the discussion of reserves, you'll note, this is not a staff recommendation. On the discussion of reserves, you'll note, this is not a staff recommendation to use the city's reserves, which are intended for specific purposes to mitigate a property tax increase. Should committee wish to mitigate a property tax increase by way of a one time transfer from reserves, we would absolutely need to factor that in to future budget discussions as to how we would replenish the reserves, which one of the methods would be by way of a repayment funded from property taxation.
Okay, and if we weren't using the reserve funds, would there be a different rigor applied, as in would we have to have a referendum?
Another alternative is in part what's proposed before you, deferring, so reducing core operating expense line items that will reduce the funding that's required. But all that is doing is deferring that necessary property tax increase to a future year.
I'm going to recognize Robert. I think he wants to step in here for the comment. Robert?
Thank you, Chair Logan. Councilor Day, you know, you certainly make an excellent point on the hard work that the city has done to develop those reserves is laudable. The reality is, the right thing to do in the twenty and forty and sixty year horizon is to set up the correct amount of funds to recapitalize our infrastructure assets. At this juncture, administration is of the belief that council is desirous to balance that policy objective of long term future recapitalization against the short term need to react potentially to an incapacity in local ability to pay. And so while there isn't a specific plan to replenish any diminishments that were made in terms of contributions to reserves or actual collections from those reserves to fund any of these tactics, such a plan would need to be made. It really is trading kind of a short term policy objective of a diminished household capacity to pay against the long term policy objective of setting aside the right amount to recapitalize into the future. Certainly, on deferral of increases to service that were notional thirty days ago, you know, council may need to consequently defer ones that were notional to begin in twenty twenty one, or defer ones that were notionable to begin in twenty twenty two, for example. And so you might need to move everything forward a year if you want to make room in the short term for this potential diminished capacity to pay. Administration just wanted to provide committee and through committee options for you to move that forward.
Very good. Thank you, Robert. I recognize Michael.
Hi, I am not an economist. I'm a longtime engineering person. But I believe that all economic theory and practice tends to show that it's at times like these that governments should spend more money and not less. As indeed the federal government is doing both here and elsewhere. However, we're not in a position to spend a great deal more. But I think we could do our part by carrying on as if this three point five to tax increase were happening, but funding that increase from reserves. And some reserves are intended for specific purposes and some are for fairly general purposes. And yes, we went through a very difficult time. A, I guess about ten, twelve years ago. And we came out of it. And in that period, we were able to build our reserves from near, close to zero, in fact, on the wrong side of zero, to where they are today, which is quite healthy, I believe. Otherwise tend to be corrected if I'm wrong on that. And so I think this, what we're talking about funding from reserves is, I believe, somewhere less than two percent of our total reserves, which were built up to this degree over, as I said, ten years. So I don't think we'll have trouble replacing it over the next ten. We'll have to be careful about that. But I think right now, we need to proceed with our improvements in services. Every dollar we spend causes employment somewhere. And we need to fund it from reserves. Because although we can't go in with an unbalanced budget, we do have the reserves at our disposal. And I think we should use them for the kind of emergency that this is. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. I recognize Mayor Martin.
Thank you. I will just, first of all, just say what I believe or what I'm supportive of. And then I will, I have one motion that I would like to just try and get this to move forward. So first of all, I think it's easy for us to look at deferring the one percent to reserves in regards to the infrastructure replacement plan. I believe, you know, we certainly did not anticipate that we would be in a once in a hundred year situation. I think none of us expected that. I mean, even in February, as we were building out our budgets, we certainly wouldn't have been planning for a, for an increase of three point five if we were at that point. So I think to defer the one percent would be an easy thing for us to do. And I think it's an appropriate thing to do because we are, we are in a very, very difficult time for a lot of families right now. There's a lot of families who are really struggling and really hurting. And I think it's important that we message out. Unlike the provincial and federal governments, as our finance team has said, we can't run a deficit. So I mean, clearly, we should be spending more. I agree with Council Baxter that in the ideal situation, we would be putting money into the economy. But unfortunately, we don't have that ability to borrow against that. So what it's important for us to do is to try and minimize our costs to our homeowners and to our residents as best as possible. Regarding the increased services of the one point four six, I am certainly not a fan of looking at reducing those, especially for police and for fire. But I think we have to. I think that's just the reality of where we're at right now. I think if we asked our residents, would they prefer to have one more police officer? Or would they prefer to try and keep their finances afloat in their own household? I think we know what the answer is going to be there. I'm going to, so I'm actually going to be supporting that we look at reducing all the increased services and bringing that to a zero for this year. Regarding the maintaining the existing services, I don't think this is also a time for us to be, to be cutting back, to actually to reflect what Council Baxter was saying. And I would actually be supportive of us funding that through reserves. Reserves are there for unexpected events, for these one time events. We're not, you know, if we're not taking money out of reserves now for COVID nineteen to try and help us in the short term, I'm not exactly sure when we would consider doing that. I think this is the most appropriate time. When there's an emergency, you step up and you try and make it. I also understand that there's a concern in regards to that that would be a higher reflection on the twenty twenty one. We don't know what twenty twenty one is going to look like right now. I don't think it's this. I am the biggest person when it comes to forecasting out, looking five years, ten years, twenty five years, fifty years down the road. That's who and what I am. And I don't think that this moment in time where we are right now in COVID nineteen, twenty twenty is when we start forecasting out five to ten, fifteen from now. What we do is we address the problems that residents are experiencing at the present time. So saying all that, I would like to make a motion, Chair, just so that we could start this. And I would like to make a motion that for the twenty twenty budget, we defer the one percent to reserves in regards to the infrastructure replacement plan. And I guess I would look for help as well from staff if that's not the exact wording that you need.
I think, thank you, Mayor Martin. I think we get the, just about the understanding. So I'm going to clear the hands right now. And since there's a motion on the table, so discussion on the motion. If you could raise your virtual hand, I'll recognize Doug. And I bet you you're muted.
Oh, thank you very much, Chair Logan. Yeah, that's, I agree with everything you said there, Rob, on the motion. I guess my biggest fear right now is that, you know, the one thing that you get an opportunity to do during these times right now is do a lot of walking. And in my neighborhood, isn't particularly affected as much as the neighborhood right behind me. And I get stopped by a lot of people. And, you know, we'd have to absolutely be tone deaf if we even consider. This is my opinion, just from what I can gather, that a tax rate increase would be appropriate. It just, it just doesn't make sense. For all the reasons everybody has already stated. I mean, we can't carry deficits. We're not federal provincial government. So, and I, this is my biggest fear. Everyone is talking about like this is gonna, it's gonna come and it's gonna go away. And we're gonna get this recovery like you wouldn't believe. Well, I don't think that's gonna happen. It's not gonna be this V shape. It's gonna be big U. And it's gonna take time. And everything has to be planned. I mean, our whole paradigm is gonna have to change a little bit here. So I mean, I could sit here and say, it's, it's, you know, tax increase or not. It didn't really bother me one way or the other. But, you know, I'm really listening to what our constituents are saying right now. And to me, I'm gonna support a zero percent increase, period. And because I, I mean, some of the things I haven't seen, the expenses that are being cut are, you know, things that are what I call discretionary. For example, we, I think we agreed that everyone gets a five thousand dollar travel thingamajigger training or whatever it is for all the councils. I mean, to me, that should be cut zero, bang. There's a lot of, there's a few things like that in the budget. And those are the type of things that I think should just go away because it sends the right message. And to me, right now, for us even even consider a tax increase, considering where the situation of some of our residents, I'm not saying that all in this, in this situation. I mean, for all, you know, to lead the way, I wouldn't even care, I wouldn't even care if I gave back my salary that I make from the city. I mean, that's how I look at this right now. So my point is, is that I'm gonna support a zero percent increase.
Great. Thank you, Doug. I got Stuart. And I bet he's muted too.
I was, I was. So I guess I got a fair bit to say, and then it relates close enough to the mayor's motion that I'm just gonna go on here. Firstly, you know, being an old guy, seen a number of these slowdowns over the years. You know, eighty one was really brutal, ninety five was tough. We had, you know, the dot com bust and the two thousand eight, the financial crisis and all this stuff. And it does percolate through the whole society. And as a young guy, it was always, oh crap, this is awful. I can't wait till six months when it's back to the way it was and light goes on as normal. But it never did. It always came out different. It was always, it was always a change. And I think we have to realize that. And I think that sort of flows from what, you know, Council Day was saying and the mayor and Doug, that there's going to be a new normal coming out. And so when we talk about, well, we'll do this stuff and then next year we'll have to bump it up so that we can get back to on the track we were on. We have to be real cautious about that. The track we were on is not the track we're gonna be on. You know, and it's gonna take six months and then it'll be back to normal. Though that's not the right approach here. We have to tighten our belts. We have to really be almost savage in what we cut. You know, we have to be, we have to trim the sails and be ready for tough times for a while. And again, when I say that and I look at, at what we're saying in the spreadsheet that we've got here, which is a great first start, I go, but, but I don't want to cut police and I don't want to cut fire services. You know, some of these new staffing positions, I think we have to look very carefully at those and say, you know, yeah, it's gonna be a little bit tougher. We're a little bit bigger city this year than we were last year. But, but maybe we have to just get by somehow. And, and, you know, frankly, I'm the one who's always yapping on the sustainable infrastructure fund that we haven't really figured it out yet and haven't really come as a decision as a council. But I still think we should have one. So I, you know, I would have, my preference would have been maybe leave half of it in and find the savings elsewhere. So I guess what I'm coming around to is asking Jen and Alan is, you know, how, how, how tough were they in going around looking for savings? And, you know, you presented a list of savings here, which gets us to the number, but it's got some issues to it, in my opinion. Where else can we be looking to create the savings that are needed to get to the zero percent tax increase? That's, that's my concern. I don't know if that's appropriate to ask now in the middle of this motion or not. But, but that's kind of where I think we need to go to.
Yeah, thank you, Stuart. And I think I've probably been a little bit liberal with you and Doug. So I would like to bring us back to actually the motion on the, on the one percent deferral of the the infrastructure replacement plan. And then we can get into that discussion about how hard the savings were, were sought and that sort of thing, if that's okay. So I, I don't see any more hands. So I will call the question on deferring the one percent infrastructure replacement plan. So by a show of electronic hands, those opposed? I don't see anybody opposed, so that item will be deferred. Jen, did you want to?
Yeah, Jen, here, just a quick comment. The policing and fire hiring deferral, this, both of these line items were based on conversations both with Inspector Preston and with our fire chief. So for fire services, this is not proposing a deferral of existing fire service delivery. This is proposing a deferral of the increase in fire service delivery. Specifically, the draft financial plan proposed the hiring of two additional career firefighters. And we were going to phase that hiring in between twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. We are now proposing that we defer that new hiring to twenty twenty one. And I'll allow the fire chief to elaborate if he so wishes. But in conversations, given the current pandemic that's underway and the desire to have, you know, a thorough, comprehensive hiring process, the support is there to defer this increased service to next year.
Thank you, Jen. Now, just to speed us along a little bit, and I recognize that I've only got twenty one percent left on my iPad. There was some discussion about, and some interest about a zero percent increase. So what I would suggest is, if someone wants to make a motion to that effect, then we can start there. And if it passes, then, then we go no further. But, but at least we'll know where we stand. So with that, I'll recognize Mayor Martin.
Thank you. I will make a motion.
Okay, so we have a motion that we proceed with a zero percent. Okay, so we have a motion that we proceed with a 0% tax increase. On the motion, I see Councilor Day, your hand up. Is it on the motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I'll recognize Councilor Day.
Thank you. Um, I can support the motion. But not if, if we achieve that through, uh, the use of reserve funds. So it, I, I'm asking for clarification. Is the motion to use reserve funds to achieve the 0% tax increase?
That, that was not my intent. My intent was just that the, as from a principal standpoint, council, uh, is working from that philosophy.
May staff have a quick comment?
Uh, absolutely.
On that, this scenario before you, for purposes of 2020, does not propose the use of reserve funds to achieve a 0% tax increase. Committee may wish to consider the deferral. So ultimately, this would be a reduction in core operating expenses. As highlighted before you, we've already received a recommendation to defer the contribution of the 1% in recognizing the revenue risks. We've highlighted that impact on our transfers to reserves. So in other words, we could achieve the 0% in 2020 by a reduction in our core operating expense as highlighted here. And in deferring the initiation of the road infrastructure program, which proposed an annual budget of $30,000.
Okay, thank you Jen. Uh, Councilor Day, you had a follow up?
Yeah, just, uh, I would like to know Jen, what, um, what the impact is on 2021 then? So we know that if we do a 0% tax increase this year, we've talked about it pushing it off to next year. So do we have, uh, an idea of how to manage next year? Knowing that we don't have, you know, our crystal ball is very cloudy at this point in time. But just an idea, uh, of how we will handle next year.
Thank you. All things remaining the same in terms of the proposed level of service. Should we make this decision? This will defer the property tax increase to 2021 and beyond. 2021 tax increase is approximately 7%. Now that being said, um, we review our financial plan annually. And as has been mentioned, we, we don't know, um, where things will go. In terms of this year's operations, we will be monitoring operations very closely and providing updates by way of our quarterly reporting. Um, and there, there's gonna be a number of factors that are going to need to be considered, to be considered as we determine how and when we implement these service increases and/or the necessary increases to fund our existing services.
Thank you.
Thank you Jen. I'll, uh, recognize Robert.
Thank you Chair Logan. I'll, I'll provide a, a comment on the last comment and then, uh, and then a recommendation for a process. So, um, with respect to, as just described, the 2021 tax increase would have many of the items that you may defer tonight, um, beginning in that tax year. If six months or nine months from now, or 12 months from now, um, the, uh, the economic recovery is more U-shaped than V-shaped as described by Councilor Kobayashi, then decisions to defer again would likely be before you and/or, uh, decisions to change other service levels would likely be before you. And so while it does say seven now, that's seven presuming, uh, that you move forward with those increases in service levels a year from now, which is probably, uh, an assumption that, that is unfounded if the recovery was delayed. From a process perspective for the conversation this evening, it would be helpful, I believe, if council were to either collectively or individually, uh, consider motions on line items 27 through 31 and then line item 35. If you were to consider those as individual motions or to consider them collectively, in their collective, they would take your, uh, tax rate increase to zero if you made them altogether. But I recognize that, uh, there are various opinions about, uh, the support, um, or not for each of them. So it may make more sense to look at them individually.
Thank you Robert. Uh, recognize Stuart.
Uh, thanks. I was just gonna ask, uh, Jen to go over again, the, um, the savings, the core operating savings and the deferred, the GIS. It looks like you're highlighting them in yellow. If all of those were implemented, that would balance the 3.52% tax increase, but not the potential revenue risks. Am I understanding that correctly?
No, if all of these are implemented, they will achieve the deferral of the required 3.52% lift to a 0% tax lift in 2020.
But not the revenue risks?
It will include the revenue risk. So of the $689,000 in revenue, it's estimated to be at risk today, $614,000 of that is budgeted as a transfer to reserves. So that will reduce our reserve transfer.
Okay. So we'll, so what we're saying is we're, we're likely, if we assume those revenue risks come, come through, what we're saying is we will likely reduce our revenue, our transfers to reserves by $614,000. And we will defer costs for the 500,000 or whatever it was, the, the 3.52%.
Correct.
Okay, so it's a million dollar decision we're making here. Although the 614, I guess, happens whether we like it or not. So nothing we can do about that. Okay.
Correct. Yeah. We've already received the recommendation. We're now considering a 2.52% tax increase or $367,000. As our CAO mentioned, it, it may be easier to consider each of these line items. These are options that staff have put forth that would reduce the need for a tax increase this year.
So these ones, we're, we're talking about the ones in yellow, is that correct? So that's 362 plus 50,000, which is, I guess, the 413. And then we've already slashed 150, so that's the 560,000. And is that the 3.52% or is that in, in excess of 3.52%?
It's approximately the 2.52%. We've already reduced our lift. This green highlight is showing that we, we will not tax that $150,000.
I know, correct. So, so, but here we have, so our property tax lift was going to be 517, is that what it was? The 3.52%?
Yes.
Okay. And then if we go down, can we go down to the yellows again? So then we're at 413, correct?
Plus 30.
Plus 30, so 440 plus 150, so 590.
Yes, and then we offset that by the revenue risk of 75,000. That brings us right back to the 517,600.
Gotcha. Thank you. Sorry to be anal, but.
Not at all.
Way I was born.
Okay, uh, recognize Michael.
Yeah, I, I just wanna repeat that I, I think, um, reducing our spending is the wrong thing to do in these times. It's recessions are caused by the reduction in private spending. And the antidote is actually increases in government spending. And the only way we can increase our spending is by taking it from reserve. However, um, if everybody else is sitting on this course, I, I wouldn't intend to vote against it because I think that sends the wrong message. But I do, I do think we're going about it the wrong way. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Robert, recognize you.
Thank you Chair Logan. I think it's important, uh, to articulate that, uh, the discussion this evening is with respect to our operating budget. And administration, um, is keenly aware that fiscal stimulus as a response to this economic contraction and as a tactic for governments to help stimulate the economy is likely. And that administration is going to accelerate our capacity to move forward with capital projects should that fiscal stimulus materialize and/or should, um, interest rates stay, uh, at the rate that they are. And so administration will, outside of the traditional budget cycle, accelerate our process to identify, um, and pre-plan capital projects such that we are ready to play our role in the fiscal stimulus response, uh, to our recovery.
Great. Thank you for that clarification, uh, Robert. Uh, I'll, uh, recognize Dean.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, a couple of points. To Michael's point, um, I say we are doing our part. Unlike several other communities, we're, we're not laying anybody off. So we are continuing to contribute to this economy and keeping our staff employed, who are in turn spending money in the community. So I, I think, again, we are, we are doing our part, uh, as we move forward here. And now just a question, uh, to help me understand for, uh, Jen or whomever. If we make these cuts as suggested to zero out the budget increase, what does that do to the 1.06% bump that was necessary just to keep us in the block? Is that factored in or is that something separate?
As it stands right now, um, if we choose to reduce our core operating expenses, that 1.06% will in turn reduce. There's a couple of alternatives. We either maintain the core expenditure and, and tax for that core expenditure. We reduce that core expenditure and reduce the tax necessary, which is in part what's being proposed right here for the building and bylaw and development services. Or we maintain that core expenditure, we tax based on prior year 0% tax increase. And then we draw down on our reserves to fund the necessary increase. Um, a comment I heard, um, earlier was to not propose the use of reserves to fund that necessary increase. So an alternative for consideration, um, is that we would reduce core expenditure in these areas as highlighted, that would reduce, um, the proposed core increase in 2020. And then again, this would be reviewed for 2021 budget deliberations. The expect, staff's expectation is that where there is a temporary decrease in core, that, that would need to be, um, increased next year.
Okay, so I think I have that. Uh, we make these reductions to keep us at 0% for this year. And factored into those reductions, uh, we'll be able to cover the 1.06% of the 153,000, either through reductions or tapping into some reserve funds to maintain existing services. Is that right? Or are we gonna see a net reduction in services?
We're not gonna see a reduction in service level. What we are proposing is delaying the rehiring, um, of either current vacant positions or projected vacancies later this year. In the next year's budget, we would be bringing forward a budget that represented the full cost of that core service delivery. And so in that sense, that is a true deferral of the necessary tax increase for maintaining the core service delivery. Where it's an increased service level, um, that we're proposing the deferral of, as was mentioned. We will be reviewing, um, these service levels, you know, it, it certainly isn't staff's intention that we expect that any deferral of increased services will automatically occur in 2021. This is something that, that we will be reviewing, um, throughout this year and, and into next year's budget deliberations.
Okay, uh, thank you. I appreciate that. And I appreciate that, uh, you're looking to us to take some decisions. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I am looking forward to, uh, going through each one of these line items as far as the, uh, deferrals go. Just, um, my personal pet peeve, uh, we, the inspector has asked us for another body this year. We did agree to it. He did ask, you know, for a reason and it was out of necessity. And I don't think, uh, that we should be pushing that back, uh, too many years. I, I think we can maybe float this for the six months to 2021, but I'd hate to see that new hire for the policing, uh, of our community, which is a core service, uh, safety in our community. Uh, I wouldn't wanna see that pushed back any further. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Robert.
Thank you. To add a little bit of further information to Councilor Jensen's question, I think on the, I'll use line 27 as an example, on the building and bylaw delay rehire. When we speak about a reduction in core services, we, we believe we have the capacity to do that because we're up under the belief that there's gonna be a slowdown in the volume of work within that team. And so we are not reducing core services in order to, uh, save taxpayer supportive disposition. We are reducing services in this example because of the belief set that there's going to be less work. And if a year from now, um, that holds, um, then kind of that discussion would occur at that time. But we're, we're trying to, to match our service delivery, even within our core services, the community need.
I, I appreciate that. Uh, and the only thing I would add is that, uh, the delivery of safety in the community is counterintuitive to, uh, economic, uh, I mean, uh, we all know as, as an economic downturn, there is an increase in, uh, crime rates. That's factual and that's, uh, very much, uh, stands, withstands scrutiny over time. So I do believe that we do need to, uh, sincerely consider, uh, augmenting our current complement of officers as soon as we possibly can.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Martin.
Thank you. Uh, it's my understanding we have a, we have a general motion out there, which is a 0%. And I would, uh, encourage the chair to call it, um, uh, a question on that. The, the, if, uh, regarding line 27 through basically all of those lines that employee are hiring deferrals, we need to either move on and start talking about these things and specific line items and let's, let's address them or, or, or address it as a group if we're supportive or not supportive of that. For myself, I know I'm very supportive of basically deferring all of the employee hire, uh, until 2021. And so, uh, I, I would, uh, I would like to, um, have us move forward. So, uh,
Thank you. So I have no further hands. So there is a motion on the floor made by Mayor Martin earlier that, uh, we move to a, a 0% tax lift. I will call the question now. So if you are opposed, please raise your virtual hands. I'm not seeing anybody opposed to the motion. I'm not seeing anybody opposed to the motion, so the motion passes. Um, and Michael, I uh recognize your, your hand.
Yeah, uh, so I'm just considering a further motion. And that would be regarding the um, the effect of what we've done, taken with what we did earlier in regards to the change to the business tax. So I'm asking the question right now. Have we effectively zeroed the net increase in taxes overall? And will that therefore result in uh a decrease in um business taxes and a slight increase in residential taxes because of the earlier?
I I think you're, that's a valid question. I think you're bang on. Uh, Michael, uh, Jen?
It's Alan here.
All right, Alan, sorry.
Yeah, uh, correct. Um, provided everything else um stayed consistent. The only thing we would add, obviously, with your taxes are components, including C R D, education, et cetera. Uh, on a positive note to the businesses, um, the education amount will be cut in half. So I think if we're looking at total tax bill, we don't want to forget that. Internally, just with Callwood, yes, if nothing else changed, there would be a slight reallocation amongst those two classes. And the net increase would be zero percent. Hopefully, that answers what you were asking.
Okay, uh, Michael, did you have a follow up? I see your hand go up again.
Yeah, as I say, I was considering a motion. So um, I've got the answer to my question. And I think we have not therefore achieved um, the intent of an absolute zero increase in taxes to the average homeowner. And I put forward a motion to achieve that, which is that essentially we provide funding from reserves in order to make that adjustment to achieve a residential zero percent tax increase.
Does staff have that motion passed? Um, Alan?
Excuse me, Chair.
Were you clear on that uh, that motion that Michael put forward?
Yes, the impact then of that, it just so I'm clear, is moving that anticipated business reallocation of a hundred and twenty thousand, you're saying a further reduction of that amount. Um, and this might go back to the original the last uh agenda item here where we were trying to defer the business item to twenty twenty one to avoid that impact on the residents. But if you're saying having the residential tax of zero, we would need to find that additional hundred and twenty-ish thousand from the earlier approved motion.
Right. So what uh, what uh Michael's saying is that that uh uh, that tax shift from business to residential be funded to reserve. That's what the motion says? Yeah, for twenty twenty. Uh, so this, uh, Robert?
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Chair Logan. I get, I have a couple of comments. One, I believe on the latter point. It is, it is two hundred and forty thousand. It's the combined business tax shift with the light industrial and recreational non-profit shift. I believe those will stack. And so I I'd want Alan to comment on that. Um, but I think more importantly, what council has done is notionally pass a philosophical approach that we need to get to a zero um budget lift. But you haven't, uh, we haven't yet um gone through the process to make the motions of where those savings are going to occur to help us get there. And so depending on how that goes, uh, that could influence um uh, the current motion on the table in terms of getting the remainder to get residential to zero.
Okay. Uh, Doug?
Oh. That's exactly why I voted against it. Um, it was for this reason, because I thought if this zero percent tax increase was was to go through, then we were getting a moot point at the time. And that's why I thought we we could defer. I mean, the other option on the table was instead of trying to take it out of a a reserve fund is just defer to what staff had recommended, starting in twenty twenty one. Uh, that's, that's all my point was.
Thank you. Michael?
Yeah, I I I understood um uh, Robert to say that uh we need to pass the specific motions to change specific budget items before we deal with my motion. I'm certainly willing to see the motion deferred until we've done that.
Thank you. Uh, I just want to get some clarification then, uh, Robert, Jen or or Alan. My understanding was when we were looking at a zero percent uh tax increase, we were basing that on the information that was presented to us. Uh, including Jen, what you've highlighted in the yellow. So I wasn't under the impression that we're, we were going to go line by line, because then obviously that zero percent is kind of mute.
Yeah, Jen here, I'll comment on that quickly. There are a number of ways we can achieve a zero percent tax increase. We can maintain the core budget as proposed and transfer from reserves in order to mitigate that tax increase. We could reduce some of our core or new operating expenditure, which is what the scenario before you proposes. How, what, depending on what committee specifically recommends, that will impact how the draft financial plan is brought forward. Um, in addition, just to comment on the zero percent tax increase, as we've mentioned, we have a number of levies on a typical residential property tax bill. Um, it's not just, you know, the municipal levy and the levy on behalf of the other jurisdictions. We also have parcel tax levies. We also have our sewer user fee. Various factors driving those levies. Um, so you know, as you, as you've heard from staff, maybe in years past, it's to keep in mind that the average resident may not experience a zero percent tax increase despite the fact um that the city did not raise proper, our property taxation.
Right. Uh, that's a good point. And I I guess I would just caution the committee that you know, staff have done a really good job coming up with these um, these items to scale back on to achieve zero percent. And I, you know, I just am wary, uh, given the time that we are going to get into a line by line type of um examination, uh, recognizing that we need to get these bylaws uh dealt with uh pretty quickly. So um, with that, I'll uh just recognize that Dean.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'm picking up what you're laying down and what Jen's laying down too. And I'll put forward the motion that we uh uh, put off as suggested by Jen, lines twenty seven through thirty one and line thirty five. All the items that she's uh highlighted in the yellow and including, I guess, that is uh forty six as well. So twenty seven to thirty one, thirty five and forty six. We'll do that in one bundle.
Okay, so that uh, that brings a little bit of clarity, I guess, uh, to that. Uh, we've got a motion on the table. If you're, I don't see any speakers, so if you're opposed, uh, please raise your hands virtually. I'm not seeing any opposed, so the motion passes. Uh, okay, so seeing nothing else. Jen and Alan, uh, I'm assuming you don't need anything else for tonight?
No, uh, one moment. So our next steps is we intend to bring forward um the draft financial plan bylaw to the April twenty seventh council meeting. Um, we will also bring forward um any related updates from the province. Uh, we are hopeful uh that we may receive word um of additional, you know, financial hardship support that the province will be offering. Depending on what we receive from the province, um, the city may want to consider an alternative tax collection scenario. And we will bring forward options for consideration at the April twenty seventh council meeting.
Great.
That is all from staff.
Okay, thanks, Jen. And great job, uh, Jen and Alan. We really appreciate your work you've done tonight. It was a tough slog.
Gordy?
Yep. Uh, oh, Michael, uh, I've got Michael first and Doug, I do see your hand up, okay? Michael? Uh, you're on mute. Michael, you're on mute.
Can, can we pick up my motion again now?
Uh, we can, but uh, but the motion that has, that just passed was to defer those items that I think you were wanting to um have funded from.
No, no, no. My, my motion was mere, only about funding the business tax reduction.
Oh, gotcha. My, my apologies. Thank you, thank you. Uh, yes, your, your motion is definitely on the table. Can you, could you read it out again for me, yeah, Michael?
That the um I I guess I'm going to put it very simply in in simple terms and uh uh anticipate that the financial staff will turn this into reality. But the idea is to use reserve to eliminate any increase in residential taxes as a result of the reduction in business taxes.
So we do have a motion on the floor.
Excuse me, Chair?
Yes, Alan?
Just to be clear, that was the business tax plus the other two adjustments. Is that correct?
Yeah, sorry, the business, light, industrial and recreation. Yep.
So the net impact of that would be approximately two forty, I believe, just so we're aware that we would have to find in reserves, not the one twenty.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on the motion, uh, Counselor Day?
Oh, it was me first.
Oh, uh, sorry. Yes, it was, Doug.
I'd like to, I'd like to propose a a friendly amendment to your motion, Michael. Um, and that is that uh, I I I certainly wouldn't want to take this out of reserve funds. And I still would like to go back to the staff recommendation, which was to commence this in twenty twenty one. Anyway, just for your concern.
I, um, sorry, I don't regard that as a friendly amendment. I regard that as a totally different.
Yes, yes. Uh, Counselor Day?
Thank you. I just wanted to suggest, because we're all, I think, trying to get sort of through slightly different ways to the same place. Uh, I was just wondering, Michael, if you would consider uh making your motion uh to ask staff to bring back some scenarios to achieve that. Uh, because I'm uh sensing there's some of us around the table who are sensitive to using uh the reserves. Um, so and and there may be some um other ways to achieve that uh without using uh the reserve funds. Or maybe in a more defined way that the the reserve fund would be replenished by X, Y or Z. Uh, but without micromanaging and and trying to go line by line through the budget, it might be better to just ask staff to bring that back. Because I think what you're trying to achieve is that the changes that we're making in this very difficult year uh is trying to provide relief to both our businesses and our residents this year.
I I thank you for for that, but um I I go back to what Mayor Martin said, which was if we're not going to use our reserves for what purpose? For this purpose, what are they for? This is a financial emergency on a scale we haven't seen in a hundred years. And a little bit of help out of reserves to tune up two hundred and forty thousand dollars will not materially affect our financial security.
Good discussion. I don't see any more hands uh up. Assuming staff are clear on the motion and uh committee. Stuart, did you fall over?
We, we couldn't quite figure out how to put our hand up. Um, just so we're clear then, and for everybody for full disclosure, this would then mean we start at two forty below for next year. And our seven percent could escalate uh in the ten percent range. We would have to do the calculation, just so uh we're clear on where that adjusts our foundation chair. Thank you.
That would that? That would be a known risk. Okay, uh, with those comments, I will uh call the question. Those that are opposed uh to the motion, please uh raise your hand virtually. So I do see uh Stuart, Doug and myself uh am opposed. However, the motion passes.
No, no, I'm opposed that I can't get my hand to go up. There we go.
Oh. Okay, so uh, Doug, did you take back your hand? Your, your, oh, there you are again. Okay, so those opposed, uh, Stuart, uh, Cynthia, Doug and myself, so the motion fails. Okay, uh, with that, uh, nothing else uh is required. So the next meeting is uh committee of the whole is Monday, April the twentieth. So I will ask um for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by uh Cynthia. All those in favor are opposed. Raise your hands. Seeing none opposed, uh, we are adjourned. Thank you.